Okay, we're live.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the April seventeen twenty twenty four special hybrid planning commission meeting. I'm Mike Murphy Chair. Tonight's hybrid planning mission meeting is being brought to you courtesy of Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your mics turned on for the roll call. And I don't know if Allison or Zach, someone's gonna do the roll, I guess.
Yeah, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Acuse.
Present.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Here.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Present.
Commissioner Gals.
Here.
Commissioner Ray Shees.
Here.
Vice Chair Raghead. Not here and Chair Murphy.
Here. Okay, a quorum is present. For this meeting, we will continue to use the Zoom platform. I'll do my best to recognize you in the order in which hands are raised. After being recognized, you may then ask your question, make your comments, or what have you. The first item of business is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Allison, is there anyone who's signed up for appearances that wish to address the commission?
No, no one's signed up this evening.
Okay. The first item of regular business is to review and consider approving the minutes of the March twenty seven regular meeting. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing no hands, Zach, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Acuse.
Aye.
Commissioner Batazzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gals.
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Shees.
Aye.
And Chair Murphy.
Aye. Okay, the minutes are approved unanimously. Now, the second item of of special business is the Planning Commission Bill PCB Agenda. I'm sorry, Agenda Bill PCB twenty four oh seven, Comprehensive Plan Update, Parks and Climate Amendments. And welcome Allison Van Gorp, Deputy Director, to present the this item to us.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just gonna share my screen here. All right. This off. Okay, this is a pretty short presentation I want to go through and then I can kind of switch back and forth with the tables that are in the Agenda Bill that show the major and minor amendments as well as the actual drafts as we talk about those. So we've got kind of three pieces to go through tonight. The climate goals and policies, the parks and open space element, and then some other changes to the land use element to reflect those two other pieces. The climate piece is we're taking a direction of doing minimal amendments at this time. I know we talked about this a month or so back. There is new state legislation that requires us to update the or create a climate element by twenty twenty nine. We talked about whether to, you know, pull some of these policies into a separate element now or keep them kind of distributed how they are. I think for now, the staff would like to just take a light touch, leave things how they are, and we can come back in a couple of years and do the updates that are required by the new legislation at that time. For now, we need to adopt the Climate Action Plan by reference and then provide policy direction that we're intending to make those further amendments to comply with the state legislation. So those changes are in the draft and then a couple of small amendments to policies twenty one point three and twenty eight point one. These were just intended to update them kind of to the current situation. Twenty one point three has to do with green building and I just wanted to reflect that we do have a current green building requirement in the town center and you know, that could be expanded in the future. And that's something we can look at through this policy. And then twenty eight point one, it said that we should prioritize preventing climate change and wanted to acknowledge that, you know, the science is telling us it's not really possible to fully prevent climate change at this point. And so instead, we should talk about prioritizing reduction of further climate emissions. So that's that for climate. The parks and open space element. Oh, I see a hand up. Sorry.
Yeah, I had just a quick question when I was reviewing everything. There was a note that says you added something to acknowledge that climate change was going to be difficult to directly address or stop. And when I read through all the materials that were provided to us, I didn't actually see that reference. So I was just wondering if you could either now or later just point me to where I should be looking for that.
Yeah, it's that one in twenty eight point one.
Do you know what exhibit that is?
It's in Exhibit One, the land use element.
Okay.
And it's
Reread it.
The end, it's like the third to last thing in that exhibit.
Okay, thanks.
Mm hmm. Carolyn.
Yes, I I have a question about the policy twenty one point three where you mentioned that the green building requirements are adopted for the town center and are reflected in policy twenty one point three, but I don't really see them actually being reflected. Let's see here. Twenty one. So, so they they are mentioned in twenty one point three, but that doesn't appear to me to be only for the town center or is that only for the town center?
Well, we already have a green building certification requirement at the town center, so I wanted to edit this to say, consider expanding those requirements to additional zones.
Okay.
It doesn't specifically say set town center, but I think that's
Okay.
implied, I guess.
So, so this is to to add that to to residential areas as well, right? Outside the town center, basically.
Yeah, I mean, it's not specific which other zones, but it's just saying, consider expanding it to other zones.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much.
Okay. Moving on to the parks and open space element. This one, similarly, we took a really high level approach. Oh, this is a I should say, we're just gonna change it. Prose Plan. That's what I get for copying and pasting, I guess. Um, all right, so the parks and open space element is taking this really high level approach because the prose plan already has very extensive array of goals and objectives. You might be aware, there was a pretty long public process to develop the prose plan a couple of years ago. And when we were looking at that and trying to figure out how to reference it and align it with this new element, it pretty quickly became evident that we would be either kind of like copying existing material from the prose plan or duplicating it in some other way. And it just didn't make sense. There's already eight goals and eighty objectives there. We don't need to duplicate or recreate the wheel on those. We can just have some simple references to the plan. And then also provide the policy direction related to adopting the open space zone and the park zone, since those are coming up. The open space zone will be part of this comp plan work and then the park zone will be following shortly thereafter. Is that a new hand, Carolyn, or?
Yeah, sorry, I kind of like sort of back and forth there. Trying to get attention. I'm looking at this comparison of land use element in the parks and open space with the PROS. Everything seemed to match, except for there was this one policy number twenty point eleven, which didn't seem to match very closely the objective three point eight from PROS. So is this a good time in the discussion to mention that or would we want to get in that kind of detail later, Mike?
Allison, as far as your presentation, is this a good time or do you want to defer this until later?
I think it's fine to talk about it now. I think if we're talking about specific amendments, we can get to those later, but just kind of clarifying what's what is fine to do now.
Okay, so twenty point eleven is in regards to considering the purchase of land to add to community open space to prioritize the purchase and preservation of wetlands and stream headwaters. But the objective three point eight in the PROS doesn't mention wetlands and stream headquarters, headwaters, or or anything like that in particular. Is there a way to preserve that policy intention from the draft, the current comp plan? Somehow in the policies for parks and open space?
I think actually, let me double check. I think we ended up moving or this policy, it's shown in this list, which is kind of odd, because I think it's actually a policy from nineteen that we had considered, like there was a few iterations of how we went about this. And at first, we were thinking about keeping some of these policies from the land use element and bringing them over into the parks element. And we had moved one from goal nineteen. Let me confirm, let me find it. I think that this policy remains at our goal nineteen in the land use element.
Uh huh.
Let me find it and then I can put it on the screen.
Yeah. Okay.
If I can remember which number it is.
Allison, it's nineteen, yeah, it's nineteen twelve on page five of Exhibit One.
I think that one's slightly different.
Oh, wait, that, yeah, that's the shoreline. Sorry.
Yeah, so the one I was thinking of is nineteen eleven, which has to do with private property.
Yeah, this this one seems to have been under parks and open space because of the idea that that's where the purposes would occur, you know?
Yeah, I think you're right. And so this objective that's listed three point eight is more general. It just says like, consider opposite opportunities to buffer and enhance the built environment.
So I guess in the situation where the PROS doesn't really contain a policy or goal or policy that pertains to a policy that's in the comp plan, if if it is thought to be a good policy, could we keep it?
Um.
Parks and open space element? I know it would look a little bit like an orphan, but.
Yeah, it would. Yeah, I guess potentially we could. I think the city manager Jesse Bond actually helped prepare this chart. And I know that she felt that all of these existing land use policies were the subject matter was well covered by PROS. I know, I agree that this language doesn't spell out wetlands and stream headwaters in the same way, but I think the feeling from the city manager and the park staff is that that intent was covered by this.
Uh huh. Okay, so I wonder if there's a policy in PROS that directs the purchase of, say, like, critical areas, for example, you know, areas that are particularly valuable for wildlife, because that would tend to get at the intent of this. But I I wouldn't know if they have a policy like that, but I guess I would recommend keeping it unless we can find that it's sufficiently addressed in the PROS someplace. Is that possible at this point?
Um. Like, in terms of keeping it or in terms of checking to see if it's represented somewhere?
Keeping it, yeah. Can can we keep it? We we will have another pass at the comp, the draft comprehensive plan after the open house. And if at that point we have further information, we could delete it at that point.
Mm hmm. I see a couple other hands popping up, so let's hear what everyone has to say and circle back. Victor, I think you were next.
So when you read nineteen eleven out loud, it struck me a little bit funny. I don't think you're supporting the conference conservation of private property. I think you're actually supporting the conservation of something on private property.
Um. I second that.
So conservation of, what do you mean by something on private property, like?
Well, the entire, the entire island is almost private property. So I don't think that's the intent here. And I don't, and I don't, I don't, kind of looking at the section that it's in. And I don't, I don't know what was originally here. But it's, it's, it sounds like the intent was you're trying to conserve conserve something, whether it's it's wetlands or tree canopy or or something on private property.
Yeah, I mean, I think the word conservation here is used generally to refer to tools that could either protect a specific resource, like you just mentioned, or prevent development of that property, like transfer of development rights would be used to remove the development potential from the property.
Right, I guess my point is this is worded in a very awkward way. And it sounds like you're trying to conserve private property.
That is the intent of this wording with conserve kind of construed a bit broadly in that it could mean either preventing development or protecting a specific resource, like trees or wetlands.
Yeah, I think we're conserving. I I think, Victor, you're right. A very simple word, word change there could be support con conservation on private property.
Yep, that would work.
I think if Mercer Island is intending to conserve private property in a particular manner, other than what we are trying to address here, we might want to think of other wording. But I agree with Mike's adjustment, if that makes sense.
Are you okay with that, Allison?
I'm okay with that. I don't think that has a big impact on how this works.
Yeah. Chris, did you have another comment?
Actually, I had the same exact comment and it would also take the the out. Support conservation on private property.
Okay.
But that was exactly what I was gonna say.
Okay. Angie, did you have another thing to add?
Well, I want to go back to, I think, what Carolyn was pointing to and what Allison was trying to address. So if we are talking about conservation of water courses and wetlands, I do see under natural environment policies, Goal eighteen addresses sensitive lands like water courses under several goals underneath Goal eighteen that I feel like are similar to or address the purpose of what Carolyn is pointing to. And so I'm wondering if folks could just take a look at that. And then Goal nineteen six talks about protecting wildlife habitats, forest water courses, wetlands, and shorelines, which I felt like was part of what Carolyn was also pointing to. So I think I'm just drawing attention as commissioners to that to see if that addresses the request, because I feel like it's kind of laced in several places in goals in Exhibit One of what we're looking at.
Hey.
Yeah, I think what's maybe not as clear is that the King County Public Benefit Rating System and Transfer of Development Rights programs, those inherently give you more points if you have streams and wetlands. So perhaps as staff and the city manager were considering this, they were aware of that 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 would be stream conservation of streams and wetlands was sort of inherently in those programs. You're going to get more points. It's already encouraged, but you know, I agree with Carolyn that it's a little problematic that it's not explicit. But I'm comfortable with it just because I know it's implicit in those programs.
Carolyn.
Yeah, um. This part of our comprehensive plan has always been rather a little bit confusing, hard to follow, but the natural environment policies in Goal eighteen and the policies in Goal nineteen, so both eighteen and nineteen come under the topic of natural environment policies. They just apply everywhere, you know, they're they're kind of not specific to parks, for example, whereas this policy that is in was in the under parks and recre, parks and open space is really directing the Parks Department to emphasize purchasing the places that are incredibly more valuable for wildlife when they have opportunities to spend money to purchase. Likewise, the King County Public Benefit Rating System and the Transfer of Development Rights, those are things that that help people reduce their taxes, for example, you know, private property owners. So that does pertain to private property. And the other policy we were talking of that Victor requested a change in. So I would would say that this twenty eleven is is really, it's a parks, it's a parks policy. Even though it was in the wrong place.
I think I just discovered where it is actually living under Goal nineteen. It's nineteen ten.
Mm hmm.
I don't know why I didn't see this a few minutes ago, but if you look at nineteen ten,
Yeah.
is this exact policy.
So did this get moved from somewhere else?
It it was always at nineteen ten, but we had considered moving it somewhere else and then decided not to. And so it got booted in this chart when it really shouldn't have. It really didn't need to be.
Okay, so I guess I would suggest that it should be moved to the parks, the parks policy, because it it has to do with purchase of open space and expanding open spaces. These policies in eighteen and nineteen and parks, you know, have for many years been rather tangled up. And I'm really glad to see them being separated out now. This one should be with parks, though, I think.
That is not entirely clear. You could have city owned property that is purchased to protect some headwaters or wetlands for other purposes relating to stormwater control, et cetera. And they would not be part of parks. So I don't think that should be moved. I think Allison has it in the right place. It, and I think it should remain there. If they city decides to put property it acquires into the park system, then so be it. But I think this is more appropriate in a more generic or general category such as this. Carolyn.
May I add that the policy, the very first phrase in the policy is when considering the purchase of land to add to community open space. So my interpretation of community open space and we're currently developing an open space zone and we have many open spaces that are part of the park system, that that would be what we're talking about here. That was what we meant when we drafted the policy six years ago. That's what we were talking about and that we we meant the open space properties owned by the city available for trails and wildlife and nature and so on and so forth. We were trying to encourage these incredibly valuable places, stream headwaters, wetlands that are associated with tremendous improved wildlife habitat.
Kate.
Yeah, I I think I hear what Carolyn is saying. What I'm concerned about is that we don't actually have that open space policy yet. And I'm concerned that changes wordsmithing of that policy or whatnot, you know, could make could make things inconsistent. And then I also agree with the chair that we do want this to apply to any type of open space regardless of how parks, you know, what parks calls the open space zone. Yeah, so I agree that we we do need to maintain. I'm glad to see that Allison, you found it in the in the in nineteen ten. But I'm a little bit concerned about tying it to parks with an open space, keeping it tied to that open space when the definition of open space is going to change. And we don't know what it's going to change to. I want it to apply broadly.
So are you suggesting that it should be some other reference when considering the purchase of land to add to public space or something like that, just to be safe for now? Or is that what you're getting at?
I guess I'm, I guess I'm suggesting maybe it's a, it's a, it's a discussion because I I think Chair Murphy, if it, if it is going to apply broadly and not just to parks, then it should not say then it, then it belongs in the land use element and it should not say open space because open space has a specific definition and that definition is in flux.
Right. Well, as will, we all recall from recent discussions that not all road end parks are parks. That's because there are essential public facilities in some of those, and so they don't characterize them as or list them as parks. And so I, I think we we need to leave that open. I think the the open question is, Kate, you're correct, is what language do we use here? Or do we just bookmark it to reflect that it may need to be changed in the future once the parks and open space gets better defined?
I think flagging it for the future. Is that okay for the staff to flag it that the word open space there?
Yeah, I mean, I think since we will be adopting the open space zone as part of the comp plan, we can look at that term for consistency with that code amendment. Once we get it, once we get the draft from the Parks and Rock Commission. And I'm happy just to make a note to remind us of that.
Okay. Do we have consensus on that approach? Carol, do you have one final comment?
I have a question. So I'm want to make sure I understand what the the approach is. But first, I wanted to ask Allison, with this policy located where it is right now, who or what does it apply to?
You know, I think it applies broadly. I think you know, we like, we will be adding a definition to the city code for open space lands as a part of that zoning effort. But prior to that happening, this is an undefined term. And
Okay.
I think especially with the word community there.
Yeah.
It can mean things. it can mean things that aren't necessarily city property. Um, to me, that could mean other privately owned spaces or spaces owned by other public agencies that are also available or habitat or for passive recreation.
So in in regards to considering updating the term, um you're thinking of changing it to so that it doesn't apply to the, uh, I'm sorry, I maybe I should just ask you um to explain again what updating the term is meant to accomplish.
I, is that question for me, Carolyn, or for Allison?
For Allison, please.
I was the one that raised it.
Well, from my perspective, and then Kate, feel free to chime in after um. We would need to clarify whether we mean open space lands in quotes, which are going to be these specifically designated city properties. Um, or do we mean something broader than that? That could include other types of city property or potentially property that's owned by someone besides the city.
Okay. Yeah, I I just hope that the upshot of it is that since it was intended to apply to purchases for open space in the parks department, that this policy be included in in parks in some way, in open space, in the new zone, for example. When you have policies for that zone identified, um, is it possible that this policy could be moved, I guess, in in addition to maybe exploring redefining the term? Could the policy be moved later in the process?
Yes, we can still make changes like that later in the process.
Okay, so I would recommend, you know, flagging it for consideration to be moved as well.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Uh Chris.
Yeah, I guess given your point before, uh Mike, that it might be good to apply outside parks too. It could be moved or duplicated, right? It could be also here and there um to some extent. And I guess the other thing I was just gonna, I mean, I'm fine with what what's there and what we have. I guess the other option, I haven't quite figured out why we haven't talked about it, is just to take out the restraining phrase to add to community open space when, you know, when considering purchase of land, prioritize the purchase of preservation of wetlands and stream headwaters. And maybe that's too broad, but you know, just wanted to raise it as a possibility.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Carolyn, is that an old hand?
Old hand, old hand, sorry there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it seems like we have consensus to keep this here, to flag it, to change, possibly change the terminology there based on how the community open space and parks regs come together. Uh, and thirdly, to consider either moving or duplicating this in the parks and open space um policies. Is that a fair summary?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, to me.
Any objections? Okay, hearing that.
I've got that noted down and we can include that with our consistency analysis and bring that back for further consideration down the road.
Great. Thank you. Um, next, Allison, you got a little derailed there.
Yeah, all right, I lost my place in this PowerPoint, but I think, yep. I was about to move on to talk about the other changes in the land use element. So these are just related to kind of aligning with the parks and open space element being created. Um, so it's relocating and removing some of the existing policies in the land use element. Goal twenty is moved over to the parks and open space element as goal one there. It's slightly revised, but it provides the high level piece there. And then there's three policies that, one of which we just talked about, that aren't actually, they're separate from the one we just talked about, but right next to it, so nineteen eleven, nineteen seven, and fifteen something or moved to fifteen point four. Because they don't really have to deal with park or open space land specifically. One had to do with private recreation facilities and clubs. One had to do with private property. Um, and you know, these didn't make sense to be in the parks and open space element. They made sense to stay somewhere in the land use element, so that's why we've relocated them. Um, and then those ten policies that are in the chart are proposed to be omitted because we felt that they were covered, that subject matter was covered. Um, I think if there's other specific questions about those, we can, after I get through this PowerPoint, I'll pull up the draft and we can look at them in context again.
Yeah, I do I do have a question on nineteen point seven, but I'll hold that till later.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so then over the last few days, a couple of proposed amendments have come in from commissioners. I wanted to just kind of fly over those and then again, we can look at them in the draft. So Commissioner Gels had proposed adding a policy um to twenty seven point six point four related to encouraging reduction of greenhouse gas emissions um through encouraging smaller housing units, moderate density housing, including duplexes and triplexes, and the use of green building materials and techniques. Um, we were going back and forth on email today, this afternoon, on the wording of that. Chris, I pulled here the latest version. If you want to make additional changes to that when we talk about it, that's fine. But I thought this would be a good place to start. Um, and then I also heard from Chair Murphy about policy seventeen point three. This one is not related to parks or climate, but I think he just noticed something while looking at the land use element. Um, whoops, keep. Um, and he wanted to suggest changing the word minimize to mitigate. So in terms of how to go through all of these proposals, we had a chart in the um agenda bill that suggests going through the parks amendments, minor amendments and major amendments, and then the climate amendments, minor and major. Then we've got these two um new ones from commissioners. And then finally, we need to look at the parks and open space elements. Um, I'm happy to stick with this plan. I'm also happy to just go through the draft and look at things uh piece by piece for some of these specific things people had questions about. Um, but maybe we should start with just trying to get the minor amendments out of the way. I see a hand, Commissioner Batazzo.
Um, just a quick question. So um you sent out an email indicating that Chair Murphy found a number of places where we needed to make corrections to update.
Um, so I was just trying to pull in the amendments that you all voted on last time.
Do those have any impact on one, two, three, and four of your list here?
They do not.
Okay.
They were completely separate from that. Um, they just happen to be in the same document.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't trying to also incorporate or reincorporate those or.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to get them in here so that, you know, we don't lose them and we can carry, if there's any additional amendments tonight, we can carry that all forward in a clean, convenient way. All right, I'm going to switch over to I don't know if that worked. I'm gonna stop sharing. It's not huh, the controls in Zoom have changed slightly and I'm struggling. All right, stop. There you are. Okay. So this is the tables from planning commission bill, and it's outlining the minor changes related to parks. And does anybody have any comments or questions about those?
Carolyn.
I just thought I would make a motion to adopt the minor amendments that have been proposed by staff for the land use element uh under parks.
Second.
A motion's been moved and seconded. Uh, do we have any discussion? Chris, did you have something other than discussion of these?
No, I was gonna raise a point on fifteen point four. That's okay. I I'm confused why we still have the word single family in fifteen point four. It seemed like we took it out of fifteen point one. And, you know, I I'm not sure. I guess I'm not understanding why we would include it there.
I think um the reason from my perspective was because in the code, those R zones are still referred to as single family zones and that is where these clubs and schools and religious institutions are typically located. They typically have R zoning. Um, I think we could probably choose a different word there.
That's fine. I mean, I don't think it's a big deal. I just thought that the residential areas would be broad enough to include single family residential areas and sort of move us toward a a world that's more aligned with the world we're gonna be.
Yeah, I think we could say residentially zoned areas and it would mean the same thing.
I would take that as a friendly amendment or an amendment, whatever you want to call it. Does that need a second or what?
Well, we can uh we don't have our parliamentarian here, so we might have to wing it.
I mean, if we're just looking for consensus on this, I think we can go with head nods or no one raising an objection.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we should change it.
And Commissioner accuses had her hand up, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a a very minor point to the original motion offering a friendly amendment um that we probably need to say, including nineteen ten as amended because we changed the language of nineteen ten.
Correct. Let's just carry that over here. So we changed it to say support conservation on.
Yep, thanks. And uh regarding fifteen four, um again, I'm concerned about um wordsmithing without having the actual um code definitions in front of us. I like, I I appreciate it. It's more me, like, it means something to me, like, it's easier to read and understand the way with the um with the wordsmithing, um, I think it will be more accurate in the future. However, we have what we have right now. Um, and so creating new terms that might have different definitions, I don't know, it just feels awkward. I want, just don't, maybe just flag that for consistency if if there's agreement to change it.
Victor.
I'm reading fifteen four and I uh maybe it's just my read of this, but this does not feel minor. This feels actually rather significant.
Just to be clear, the underlying and strikeout here is what the commission previously reviewed um eighteen months or so ago when we initially reviewed the land use element.
So what's the minor change then?
Um, combining, so up until this last sentence, this existed in another, it was under goal seventeen, and this last sentence was under goal twenty. We didn't change the wording, we just combined them and put them into fifteen because fifteen is the goal that talks about the single family residential areas. So there were no wording changes proposed. It was just combining these two pieces and putting them in a different spot. That was the minor change.
Andy.
Um, I have been tracking this fine item and it is not new. It's been in our plan for a long time, as Allison indicated. Um, and I just really do want to caution us from getting editorial in places where we where it's existed, it's pointing to a very specific zone in a land use policy and a code that has a specific terminology um related to single family zoning. This is talking to, this is talking about facilities within single family zones. Um, so there's specificity that has existed and needs to continue to exist in order for the city to manage the properties. So I'm not in support of making any changes to this at this time.
Chris.
Yeah, and I just raised the issue. I'm perfectly happy to leave it alone, so let's just go back to what it was.
Okay. So we're back to the original motion, and that is to approve the minor amendments. Do we have any discussion or over the other two that are listed there? Okay, should we do uh Allison, would you prefer just consensus on that or a vote?
Well, since we had a motion, let's just do a vote on the motion.
Okay. Adam, can you call the roll?
Yeah, can you read the motion again, please?
Sure, it is adopt the minor amendments to the park policies as proposed by staff and amended. Um, and that was moved by Boatsman and seconded by Batazzo. Um, Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Batazzo?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Gels?
Aye.
Commissioner Reshiz?
Aye.
And Commissioner and Chair Murphy?
Aye. Okay.
Sorry, what was that?
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion passes.
Allison.
Okay, um, next we'll be moving on to the major amendment for parks, which was omitting those ten policies um other than the three that we just moved to other locations.
Carolyn.
Out those, those that were omitted, um, I thought I read in the staff memo that they were moved. But then when I looked to see where they were moved to, I didn't see where they were moved to.
They were, they were omitted. If if it said moved, it was a typo. We had initially considered moving these into the um parks and open space element, and then upon further consideration, felt that that subject matter was well covered in the pros plan. And we didn't want to have duplication or difference of something that was.
Yes, thank you. I've just momentarily confused for a moment.
Okay, any further discussion of the change to twenty point one to twenty point thirteen? Okay, all in favor, should thumbs up? Okay.
Okay, great. Um, so let's move on to the climate policies in the land use element. Um, they're kind of, the minor amendments are split in this chart. There's one at the top and two at the bottom. Um, I think we already talked about these to some extent. Um, updating wording in twenty Updating wording in twenty one point three and twenty eight point one. Goal twenty eight is struck omitted because it's that topic was moved up to goal twenty six and this new language was drafted. So what we're looking for is just approval of these three minor changes.
Okay, any discussion of those changes? Okay, seeing none? Do we have consensus on those? Okay.
Great. And then for the major climate amendments, it adds the new goal twenty six and then the two new policies related to adopting a climate element as directed by state law and the Growth Management Act, and that'll need to happen by twenty twenty nine. And then it adds the second policy, adopting the Climate Action Plan by reference.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? Oh. Angie.
I just want to make one comment, and it is broad. One of the things I notice is that there is a vacillation between when we reference trying to make improvements or do things for residents of Mercer Island versus when we try and do things for people. I do think language is important overall, and I think it would be important for all of us to start practicing language that's highly inclusive where we're referencing people, whether they live on the island or not. So whether we're making climate change adjustments, parks, parks adjustments or so forth. That I found the language more in parks than I did in climate. But what I recognize is sometimes where we talk about making improvements or doing comp plan things for residents of Mercer Island when in fact, as a municipality, where we're serving more than just our residents, that we practice a language of inclusivity where we're shifting that for residents to for people. It's a broad comment. It's not a make the make the changes here, but I just want to put that on record as something I'm starting to notice more and would like to see us practice more about shifting when we're referencing who we're doing things for that to the extent that we can include it just for people, not just residents, that's important.
Yeah, good point. Okay. Next. Is there any more issues on any of this besides the two amendments Chris and I have? Okay. Allison, you want to move to those?
Yeah, I'm gonna stop sharing this and bring up the actual draft. Let's see. Find versus lives in twenty seven. Okay. So Commissioner Gels is proposing adding a sub policy here under promote an energy efficient built environment by reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the construction heating and cooling of residential structures by encouraging smaller, single-family residential housing units, moderate density housing, including duplexes and triplexes, and the use of green building materials and techniques. All right, Chris?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, the, you know, the goal twenty seven is reduce community-wide greenhouse gas emissions, you know, the, I think the, the emissions in the building and the cooling and heating of the built environment in Mercer Island, and you know, a lot in the residential side is maybe our biggest contributor to to greenhouse gas emissions. And so I think it's an odd omission that we haven't said something and it would be, to my mind, a a good idea to put a policy placeholder here so that we have it on record.
Any other thoughts? Carolyn.
Yeah, I was really excited to see this policy introduced because throughout the work on the housing element and the climate element, we really don't have this anywhere in policy. The Climate Action Plan does not talk that I could find anywhere about the size of structures being related to climate emissions or that we should have any particular thoughts about the size of structures, let alone encourage doing anything about it. So I'm very pleased to see this include encouraging smaller, single-family residences, encouraging moderate density, and encouraging the use of green building materials. So I think it's really good. I'm pleased to see the sort of the update of the draft policy from where I first saw it. I just have one question, Allison. Do we address, again, the green building materials and techniques? Do we have that somewhere else already? That I mean, it's nice to have it all in one spot. I don't mind repeating it because it's, it's got the context, but.
There is a section up above that's specifically about green building, and so there's a few policies related to encouraging green building. So yeah, I think it's okay to have this, have that here too.
Yeah. Particularly because it relates it to the reduction of greenhouse gases, right? Yeah. So I think it's really good policy. I like it. I'm in favor.
Any other comments? I would just make the comment, I think this is a really good way to introduce this. Especially with the language in the latest draft about encouraging smaller housing. And, you know, I think the more you listen to things and read things about, you know, sources of greenhouse gases, you realize that the single-family residence is a huge contributor. And that we should be working to try to reduce that to the extent possible. Now, I want, since Adam's not here, I want to give voice to his concerns as expressed in his email. And, and I initially shared some of Adam's concerns to a degree as it related to the original language. But the most recent version eliminates the notion of the limiting language and instead encourages a certain activity and policies that we will ultimately have to comply with. Now, people are still free to build adequate multi-generational homes. But I don't think this proposal is designed to require or even encourage only two-bedroom, one-point-five-bath homes, as Adam pointed out. I think that's a bit of a straw man. I think that, you know, what motivates this and what concerns many people is that, you know, we've got five thousand square foot houses with two adults and one or two children in them. And that's, that's not really for multi-generational living. And houses of that nature truly have an outsized impact on climate change at many levels, both from construction to operation. So I think the, I think that introducing this policy here is a good one, and I support it. Okay.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I was just gonna say that I do support the policy. And I read and considered Mr. Rigob's note as well, and I thought it was interesting. My, my experience with most multi-generational families in, in the actual international communities he might be referencing is that they live in apartments and, and they're very small relative to the large homes that are being built on Mercer Island. So I agree with you, Chair Murphy, that it's the si, the size of the house does not need to be five thousand square feet to have a multi-generational family. There are plenty of multi-generational families living in two thousand square foot apartments all over the world. It's a, a gigantic house is more of a status symbol than, than a need of an international family, so it it, it struck me kind of I don't know. It made me think too that, like, housing policies that are meant to address race and social justice, they're, they're not meant to address race and social justice for folks who have high incomes. They're meant to address race and social justice for folks who have been disenfranchised by historically racist policies. So it just, it struck a foul note with me, the notion that large houses, small houses prevented multi-generational living. It seemed almost like abusive of the concept of race and social justice.
Yeah, on a personal note, I found it somewhat amusing because when I was a child, my grandmother lived with us, so I grew up in a multi-generational household. And the house was twenty-one hundred square feet. And there were four children, two adults, and one grandmother. So and we thought it was huge. So, yeah, I, I don't know if it struck, it struck me more as amusing than as a sour note, but I understood his point and but it was, it was didn't, didn't really resonate very much, so. Any other comments? Okay. On that note, should we do we need a vote on this, Allison, or do we do a thumbs up or?
Thumbs up would be fine.
Okay.
All right. And then.
Victor, do you want to vote or would you block consensus on that?
I did vote. I was thumbs down.
Yeah, we didn't do a formal vote though.
That's fine.
Good.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to policy seventeen point three. Chair Murphy has proposed this wording change from minimize to mitigate.
Let me comment on that, Angie, and then I'll let you talk. That kind of jumped out at me this time as I read through it. And the reason it jumped out at me is that usually in things like this, the term of art, especially in land use and SEPA is mitigation, not minimization. And it's not clear what minimize would really mean there. And so I just thought a whereas mitigate and mitigation is a very commonly used term in that context. And so I felt that that was really more appropriate, and it can certainly encompass minimization, but it covers a broader range of, of factors. Angie, you were first.
Thanks. Okay, so as a practitioner who uses the words minimize and mitigate to bludgeon my counterparts, I will readily acknowledge that to minimize something has very specific context, both in SEPA, NEPA, and other conditions versus mitigate. When we minimize, we take specific actions to reduce the actual impact of said event. When we mitigate, we recognize that we cannot reduce the impact, and therefore we have to offer something alternative to reducing the impact. Oftentimes, in places where this has been applied, can sometimes result in paid, like, we are paying mitigation in the form of X, Y, or Z. Mitigation and minimization are two very different distinctions. And that puts the city in a pretty specific position. As a practitioner, when I seek to mitigate something, I get something that I define because you're trading the impact for the result. As a minimization, the city has some control over being able to take the impact and make it less than. And so that wording is pretty specific, and I think we need to be mindful about where, where we're placing it. I'm not saying one or the other, I'm not saying I'd vote up or down. I am saying we have to be mindful about the word we're actually using because minimize versus mitigate is something super specific that I use pretty frequently in my own practice.
Let's see, Carolyn, I think you were second.
Okay. Well, I think both of you made terrific points, and I'm causing my thinking to progress. It begins to seem safer for the city to minimize the impacts in terms of how we review and approve the development. Whereas if we say we're gonna mitigate it, it seems like that might yeah, I don't know. It might put us on the hook for things that could be expansive, that are hard to define. I'm, that's all I can say. I don't have any, any further clarification on that. I'm not quite sure how to vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment so far. Thank you for recognizing me, Chair. So, yeah, in, in, in our practice, we have a phrase called environmental regulations. We have a phrase called the mitigation sequencing, and there's an order of things. You try to avoid, then you minimize, then you mitigate. And you want to, you want to avoid mitigating if you can, because mitigating can be very expensive. When I read the word mitigate, I was thinking of all the times I've applied for permits as a government institution, and folks in the community have claimed it was a takings to do the project. So I think there's, I agree with Commissioner Batazzo that there's a financial implication for the city and some potential exposure for the city to use the word mitigate. So I would, I would propose that we if we want to make an edit here, that we would say that avoid and minimize and leave mitigate out of it.
Victor.
So I, I kind of share Commissioner Boatsman's sentiments, and I'm having a hard time getting my head around this a little bit. So I'm wondering if either Chair Murphy or Commissioner Batazzo can just give me an example of how we would mitigate versus minimize here? Just so I can give me a way to think about it. Okay. And do I get to call on Commissioner Batazzo if she's raising her hand?
Sure, sure. Go ahead, Angie.
Yeah. So I'm gonna qualify this discussion by saying this is just Angie B. talking in her practice. And, and I'm building off of what Commissioner Cuse talked about, which is standard practice in the state of Washington and any municipality under a certain set of environmental rules. Avoid, minimize, and mitigate. And this is actually a great point as to why I actually didn't like this, the edit that we added, especially residential zones. Victor, you're gonna appreciate this. I didn't like it. I thumbs-downed it when we've added that, and I'll explain to you why. When government takes an action that has an impact, okay, it has to assess that impact, and it has to decide if that impact rises to the level of is it minimizable? Can we do things to make it less of an impact, not just to residences, but to businesses, to economy, and to government? Not just to residences, but also to businesses, economy, and government. It has to assess that impact, okay? If it decides that the impact is such that they can't minimize it by putting up, so for example, we're gonna do something really loud. We're gonna do it for three weeks. Is there a way that we can make that really loud thing not so loud to somebody? If we can make it not so loud, that's called a minimization. So we put a giant foam wall up and we make the thing not as loud to everybody else. So it's loud inside the foam wall, but outside the foam wall. That's a minimization impact. If we have to do a very loud thing, it's beyond what's loud for the world, the environment, and we can't put a big foam wall up, we might have to mitigate. To mitigate might mean I've gotta pay for you to relocate your business, or your house, or your sleeping arrangements, or some variety of things that we have to negotiate. I might have to mitigate by doing some I might have to mitigate by doing something because I'm gonna do the loud thing to get the thing done and you have to deal with it and we have to come to some agreement via mitigation. Minimization is I have an impact that I can make it less feelable to you because I can put up things or I can do something that you don't notice as at much. Mitigation is I'm gonna do the thing and there's nothing I can do to make that thing more impactful to you. And so now I have to do something different to make it up to you. That's what mitigation is. And it's not just here, we say, we added at our last meeting, especially residential zones, and I was annoyed because businesses get impacted by construction. Businesses lose economy by construction at various levels. Jurisdictions lose tax revenue when businesses lose economy. And so there's an important mitigation system there that we have to consider. So it's not just especially residents, it's the economy too. And so when we say avoid, we have to avoid the impact. When we say minimize, we need to minimize that impact. I need to take the loud noise or the diversion of traffic or the thing that might seem really substantial and I need to make it less. That's called avoid. If I can't avoid it, like the tunnel in downtown Seattle, we had to build a tunnel and we had to take down a viaduct. And that had a massive traffic impact that we could not change because we could not put cars someplace else. So so DOT had to mitigate. They had to pay for ways to make that less impactful. Those are very distinct categories that apply to not just residents, but it applies to businesses, it applies to economy, and applies to government.
I appreciate the explanation.
So.
What uh can I ask a follow on to that?
You sure can.
Can it? Basically, and and I guess this is is more of a question for Chair Murphy, but but also Commissioner Batazzo. But I'm gonna ask of Chair Murphy because he's the one proposing this. Why is this either or? Why isn't it minimize or mitigate? That's what I took away from the explanation that Commissioner Batazzo just gave. Did I misunderstand?
No, uh so I I think I I agree with with basically everything Angie said. Um the difference here and and what I think we're highlighting is the use of a use of alternative or potentially alternative terms of art where they may not belong. Um and that could be the core problem here that I was trying to deal with. And uh I think Angie, you have succinctly crystallized for me what jumped out at me here and why I suggested that other language. Um I think we're really looking for something, it it, you know, we're talking here about code change, making code changes. We're not talking about building tunnels. Um and and while there is certainly some overlap in the CIPA review process, um because both new regulations and tunnels, bridges, et cetera, go through CIPA, the impacts and the analysis are quite different. Uh CIPA review of new regulations is pretty cursory. Um and so I was looking for the more um benign use of the term mitigate. Whereas min- minimize could seem fairly draconian or could be interpreted as fairly draconian. So I think that we're looking for potentially another term here to get away from what I think are really um if if they're used as terms of art here could be problematic. Uh Kate.
Yeah, thank thanks for recognizing me, Chair. Um I I'm gonna propose that we replace instead of with mitigate, I'm gonna propose that we replace with the word consider. Um I am working on some CIPA non-project actions right now, which is when you're doing CIPA for a planning document as opposed to a construction project. Um and and those words just apply to um you know, alternatives analysis and how you're gonna, what kind of practices you're gonna use to to deal with impacts. So um I think we should avoid this language altogether. I appreciate your uh mention of that, Chair Murphy. And I would propose that we uh strike minimize as you suggest and use the word consider instead.
Yeah, I I I think that's probably a better way to do it. Carolyn.
Um I was just trying to consider what Kate had just proposed, so then that says changes in zoning regulations that consider adverse effects effects to surrounding areas. I'm not sure what that would mean in terms of doing anything, just to consider it, but I have an alternative suggestion for the language, if I may run that out there, since we're just talking alternatives here. Would that be all right, Kate?
Sure, there's no motion, there's no motion pending, so go ahead.
Okay, so I was considering the differences between minimize and mitigate and the risks associated with both of those. And also um the comment that we shouldn't just be thinking residential zones because these impacts are to uh any number of land uses. So I would have a proposal for rewording this and I would just, I can just read to you how I would suggest wording it. Add multifamily residential and other commercial uses to the commercial office zones. This should be accomplished through changes in zoning that seek to minimize adverse impacts to surrounding areas, period. So that would just, you know, mean that you you try, you try to minimize impacts, but we are under orders from state government to put in this kind of housing. You know, what is an impact is a matter of opinion. So I mean, I think the best we can do is seek to minimize. You know, that would be a way to possibly deal with this.
Uh Kate. Before before I go.
Sorry, I lost a I lost an earbud there. Um I was gonna propose a motion just to just to get things moving. Did you wanna say something before that, Chair Murphy?
Yeah, um I wanted to ask Carolyn, um she seemed to drop the word regulations out of the language she had. Was that intentional?
No, I'm sorry, I I didn't see that. No, thank you, zoning regulations. I meant to include that. Yeah.
Okay, um let me go to Angie Kate first. I think her hand was up.
Um I think I just want to acknowledge to my fellow commissioners and practitioners, and I may get this wrong in some ways, but it's approximately accurate. Um our policy here that we're putting in our comprehensive plan does not supersede NEPA or CIPA or actual review by any developer or anybody who's gonna take action. So um that avoid, minimize, mitigate pattern that both Commissioner Q's and I referenced will be if in effect, regardless of what we do here. I do think it's important for us to choose the right words. But for those of us who are worried about making sure that we're not shorting zones or businesses or residents or areas of the ability to be protected by, CIPA and NEPA are both very robust practices that get uh engaged frequently that you won't miss out on. I just think it's good for us to choose language that's both consistent um and meaningful and not put the city on the hook for where NEPA and CIPA are gonna hold the city and developers and others' feet to the fire on following through with that. So I just want to make sure we all know uh by not putting that language in, we're not shorting anybody. The language is robust in other places and works. Um so I just want to make that note here.
Uh Kate.
Um I I I continue to want to avoid using the term minimize. Um so um I guess I'll put my motion out on the table and we can just vote on it. So my motion would be to um strike, minimize, use the word consider, and then drop especially residential zones. Because I agree that um business impacts are extremely important and there are a number of businesses down there. Um and they serve children and families. They're really important businesses to our community, so. Yeah, I propose this amendment.
Okay, moved and seconded. Further discussion, Carolyn.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry. No, I meant to put my hand down. Thank you.
Any other comments? Kate, or okay. Um yeah, I I would support that motion. Okay, Adam, you want to call the roll there?
Yeah, uh Commissioner Q's.
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Batazzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gels.
Aye.
Commissioner Reshiz.
Yeah.
And and Chair Murphy.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay.
Okay, um that concludes the changes to the land use element. Um let me pull up that parks element really quick and I think that's the final thing that we need to look at.
Yeah.
All right, it fits all in one page. Um so I think I kind of covered what this includes previously. It's that goal brought over from land use element goal twenty and then the two new policies to adopt the pros plan and state our intention to adopt the open space zone and park zone. Think if there's no comments or questions, we just need consensus to approve this as drafted.
Kate, are you a thumbs down? We can't hear you.
Sorry, I I I I have to switch between too many Microsoft accounts if I use the big computer. So I I'm doing these meetings on my phone and that means I have to bring my thumbs in. To adjust things, I'm really sorry. It's probably distracting, but no, I'm a thumbs up.
Okay, thumbs up. All right. Okay, Allison.
All right, um that is it for the amendments we need to review tonight. I did have a quick, go back to my PowerPoint, um just update on scheduling and stuff that I wanted to go over quick and then Adam is going to talk a little bit about the open house. All right. So just a quick flyover of the next couple of months. Um as you all know, the open house is scheduled May first from six to eight. Um on May eighth, the Parks and Recreation Commission and Open Space Trust Board will be sending their recommendation on the open space zone and also land use map amendments to align with that. Um I believe the chairs from each of those boards will be in attendance to present their recommendation. And then the following two Wednesdays, May fifteenth and twenty second, um we will be considering what we're calling the tune-up of the drafts after the open house and survey, after we receive the input from the open house and the survey, you'll have a chance to review that and make additional amendments as needed to address all that comment um in advance of the public hearing, which is scheduled for May twenty ninth. So that's when we'll get any formal public comment, um whether that's, you know, verbal or in writing. And then we've got three dates held in June for the final review and amendments, bringing in any consistency amendments, anything based on the public hearing, et cetera. Um I think we can hone in on whether we need all three of those meetings once we get a little closer and can understand how much we might need to be considering at that time. Um but I'd say mark those dates down. June nineteenth is not included because that's a holiday. And we're aiming to complete review by June twenty six, which is coming right up. All right, that's all for me.
Okay. Third and final item of special business is Planning Commission Agenda Bill PCB twenty four oh eight, Com Plan Update. Community Workshop Preparation. Welcome, Adam.
Thank you. Um let me share my screen here. I've just got a quick slide deck to um gonna help you guys get ready for um the um oh Zoom did change everything, um to get ready for our Com Plan Open House that we're planning uh for May first. Um so the the Com Plan Op- Open House will be a two-hour event uh where we'll have stations where the public can engage with the material that you all have been working on for the last two years now, um the Com Plan Update. Um they'll be able to see um some summaries of each of the elements. And then also we'll have at some of those stations, particularly for housing and economic development, uh we'll have some exercises at those stations to to gather some input um on um on those topics. Um this will also be paired with an online survey. Um so we'll have a another feedback mechanism. So the folks that are there, if they want to dive a little deeper or provide a little more detailed input, they can they can do that through the survey. Um and that'll be kind of bundled together with our um the input that we get at the open house. Um and really, we wanted to hold this open house at this stage in the plan uh planning process so that we can engage the public, you can have an opportunity to engage with uh the public in advance of the public hearing in in a way that is maybe a little bit more engaging than the public hearing where folks get up, they have three minutes and that's kind of it. Um so we wanted to give you a chance to get um a little closer to the public in that way. Um this is also a a great chance um to to report out all the work that we've been doing for the last two years um and get um usually at these events, we get a lot of folks that have have no idea what's going on, have never heard about the Com Plan and and don't know that we've been working on it for that time. So it's it's a good good opportunity to to get the word out in that way. Um we're planning on this from six PM to eight PM on May first. Um and then as Allison just mentioned, we'll be going through a tune-up process with the Com Plan Update um through the second half of May uh to get you ready for your public hearing. And you know, part of the idea again is so that we can get the public uh comments addressed prior to holding that public hearing and that should take some of the weight off of that one, um off of that public hearing. Um give you a chance to feel like you've really responded to the public input we get. Um the open house will be held i- at the Mercer Island Community and Event Center in the Mercer Room. Um that's the big room just to the right of the um of the lobby there. Um and then and we're inviting everybody um on the Planning Commission here to attend. Um we're encouraging you to attend. Um as I mentioned, this is a good opportunity to um engage with the public um and and hear some perspectives that maybe um we haven't heard um through this process yet. Um and then staff will be on hand at the open house to help field some of those questions um and then um give a little bit more of that like technical background um at the open house.
So Adam, what um what's meant by exercises?
Well, we're still in the process of of getting those designed. Um a lot of times, uh you know, we've been we've been trying to figure out good ways to get some input on implementation. So whether that's some kind of dot exercise or um, you know, prioritization, providing there. you know, prioritization, providing their prioritization of certain implementation actions. Um, that's where we're trying to direct some of that, um, and have those, those exercises. So, you know, if you're a big fan of, you know, our proposed code amendment process to, um, make it easier for, um, small businesses to, um, expand, you could, you could say, do this first, um, that, that kind of thing. But the exact exercises are still, um, in the, in the design process.
And what are you expecting commissioners to be doing while we're there?
Um, so we don't have any, uh, specific expectations, um, in terms of, you know, so if you come and you wanna, say you served on the Economic Development Work Group and wanted to hear folks' input on the economic development element, you could, you could hang out at that station, you, you can engage with, um, the folks that stop by there, um, ask questions, you can just kind of roam around and hear the comments at the different stations. It's really up to you. Um, we don't have any, like, specific, you, you won't be making a presentation or anything like that. Um, and, um, I also wanted to take this, uh, opportunity to, uh, let you guys know that, um, you know, staff will be available or is available leading up to the event. If you have questions about, um, you know, where did we really end up with this part of the comp plan, you can reach out to either Allison or myself, and we can kind of get you up to speed or, uh, r- refresh your memory. Um, so we're, we're around if, if you need, um, additional assistance leading up to it. And we'll, uh, communicate the day of, we'll be available the day of, kind of ahead of the, the event, um, if you, if you wanna come a little early, um, too. Uh, but really, the expectation is just to come and listen and, um, you know, hear that, um, hear what the, the public has to say. Um, and then I provided a link here to where we have the, um, the public review drafts of all of the elements, uh, posted on the project website. Um, so those are available if you wanna review those in advance of the, um, of the workshop as well. Um, I see Carolyn, you have your hand up.
Yeah, will the planning commissioners be identified in any particular way when we are at this event? Will we be wearing a little placard that says I'm a planning commissioner or something like that?
We'll have name tags, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, you, we'll, we'll provide those, yeah.
Okay.
If there's one thing you can rely on at a, at a community workshop, it would be name tags being available, yeah. Um, we'll have a sign-in sheet, too.
Okay.
Um, all right, um, let's see. So, uh, Allison really already kinda touched on this, um, our, our next steps, where we're, where we're heading from here. Um, all of this is working toward that May 29th public hearing. Um, and aiming to get that recommendation wrapped up by the end of June. I, I see Commissioner Cuse has her hand up.
Yeah, I just, um, sorry if this sounds a little obnoxious, but I'm wondering if you have security plans for the May 1st event. I'm harkening back to the Sound Transit Meeting, where they brought light rail to us initially, and there were a number of very aggressive folks at that meeting that were, um, uh, spoke in some interesting ways to staff that I think made a lot of people, residents included, very uncomfortable. Um, so sometimes I, I think with these public meetings where you're talking about something that may be controversial, um, such as the housing element, um, it's good to make sure the, uh, the PD is aware and maybe has somebody there. Some presence can be helpful to uh, keep people from getting aggressive.
That's a, a good point. I don't, we haven't talked about that specifically yet. I see Allison just jumped on here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we hadn't, that hadn't come to mind for us yet, but it is something the city takes seriously. There's, back when we had, you know, real in-person city council meetings prior to COVID, there was always police presence at a city council meeting. And it's certainly something we can consider for this meeting, and I'll, I'll talk that over with other folks within the city and see if we think it's warranted.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer, answer any other questions you may have, um.
I just wanna make one final pitch to staff about anytime you guys are doing the cleanup and update and places where you can shift from the language of residents to people, um, to the extent that it doesn't substantially change things, but you guys can do that. I just wanna continue to encourage that as it relates to the language of inclusivity and starts shifting us into thinking about Mercer Island as its place in the broader context.
Definitely noting that down, yeah.
Okay. Now we move on to other business. Uh, Allison, is there any other deputy director report for tonight?
No, I think I covered everything previously in the presentation, so I'm all set.
Okay. Any planned absences for future? Chris?
Yeah, I'm gonna be out of the country from April 28th to May 23rd. So I think the next time I will see will all the public hearing.
Travel safely. Send us postcards.
You know, I, I did join you from, uh, Ecuador, cause only two hours time difference, but nine hours, I think, puts the meetings at 3:00 or 4:00 AM, so I'm just not sure that's gonna work, so.
Send us postcards.
All right, you got it.
Kate.
Um, I'm not sure what the Little League schedule is yet. I don't think we're winning the championship this year, but, um, I, I've had to miss most of my son's games with this, uh, very aggressive schedule for the comp plan and, um, there's a playoff game put on the schedule. I might be reaching out to you via email.
It's okay. Any other thoughts for the good of the order? Okay, has yet another reminder, the open house is May 1 at 6:00 PM at the Community Center. Uh, and the next special meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 8 at 6:00 PM. Uh, there being no other business to come before the Planning Commission. The time is now 7:39 PM, and the meeting is adjourned. As a reminder, please stay online until staff has terminated the broadcast. Good evening and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.